All right, I'm back now. Sorry about that.
Okay, we were waiting for some technology to get.
Okay. We're waiting for me, good.
Yep.
I missed the Sam.
Hey, how are you? Sorry, I've got my mask on, I'm still at the office and I'm not the only one here yet, so.
Oh, okay.
If somebody else leaves, I can take this off.
All right.
We're good. Okay, Mr. Short, Mayor Short, if you could gavel us to order.
We're so hereby gavelled.
All right, thank you, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I would like to open by conveying two big ideas in as few as words as possible. They are, one, we're going to outline strategies this evening to contend with anticipated revenue shortfall in current fiscal year, and strategies to balance the recommended budget for fiscal 21. Big ideas are this. The measures, the strategies required in both cases are severe, and they will be perceptible to our residents, our customers, and to our organization and our employees. There's no way around it as we see the magnitude and the substance of the challenge in front of us for this fiscal year and the next. Secondly, I would ask that you consider the plan to balance especially, one, that satisfies the need to balance the budget, to present a recommended budget that's balanced. And to get us started, at least in fiscal 21, and allow that as we conclude, say, the first quarter in 21, we'll visit the landscape in terms of public health emergency and fiscal economic well-being, and contemplate perhaps different measures that would be more enduring and would represent more permanent changes to the shape and form of our organization in the services that we run by. With that, I'll hand it off to Deputy City Manager, Mr. Shaw, and he'll walk us through a PowerPoint presentation that I think will elaborate on our strategies.
Thank you, Mr. Ham. As Mr. Ham says, I think the immediate task at hand is to figure out how to get out of the current fiscal year FY '20 basically at balance. We'd like to, our primary objective is that we'd like to preserve fund balance, and so we will provide you with our strategy for reducing expenditures to do so, and then to look forward to FY '21 with new revenue projections and give you our thoughts on presenting a balanced budget accordingly. If you give me just a second. I think everyone recognizes that the coronavirus-related shutdowns are going to have an impact on local governments' budgets. It's having an impact on local and state and even the national and global economies. And we've provided some projections as to what we believe will be our revenue shortfall for FY '20. As we got to March of '20, that prior to March 1st of 2020, the city was experiencing positive variance. We were actually tracking a little bit ahead on most of our local revenues. As we hit '20, there were a number of folks, and notably a fellow named Ron Carley, who's a former city manager, now professor of public administration at Old Dominion University, who made an effort to try to understand what the shutdown, the governor's executive orders would do to local government revenues. And the types of revenues that would be most effective most immediately would be the local government's meals taxes, lodging taxes, our share of sales tax. And we projected, according to Carley's method, that we would lose about 75% of our meals tax, about 75% of our lodging tax, about 25% of our sales tax for each month the remainder of the fiscal year. So that's essentially four months. And the total shortfall resulting would be a bit more than $1.9 million. In response, we began then to suspend and freeze all non-essential expenditures. There's a hiring freeze on all positions except those as might be approved by the city manager for, say, a public safety position. We have furloughed certain full-time and part-time employees in operations that were disrupted by the governor's executive order for stay home. And the most notable areas, for instance, are where we have a closure at the library, where there are a number of parks and recreation events or programs that we can't hold. And so the people who provide those services have been furloughed. And then, in addition, we went back to the operating budgets and started to make reductions in those budgets in the current fiscal year. We also deferred a plan transfer from fund balance to capital improvements plan of about $960,000. We're reducing the paving schedule by about $650,000 this year. And the departmental reductions that I spoke of earlier, including furloughs, amount to about a $326,000 savings for a total of about $1.93 million. As we look forward to fiscal year 2021, again, we look to some, another methodology for projecting what revenue shortfall might be in the coming fiscal year. And a gentleman named John Rhinewald has done some work for the Virginia Municipal League and a number of local governments, or at least looking at his methodology or some version thereof. And the Rhinewald methodology really contemplates a longer-term problem. And so whereas the Carley method sees an immediate and dramatic shortfalls and things like meals tax for restaurants have been sharply curtailed or in some cases closed, Rhinewald looks at a wider range of revenues and contemplates that a more long-term recession might settle in. And so whereas we may have some rebound in revenues such as meals tax or lodging tax, a sales tax, that we would think that there will be some shortfall in other types of revenues, that you may have higher delinquency rate, for instance, in real property, or that personal property values won't be achieved if people aren't buying new vehicles and so forth. And so we have projected that we would have a 2.5% loss in real property, 5% loss in personal property. The sales tax would lose about 10% of our projected revenues. All of the business professional license tax revenue will be down by 25%. Lodging tax down by 25%, meals tax down by 25%. And all other revenues of the general fund would be off by about 5%. And just as a quick reminder of the impact that this might have on our budget, that we receive about 30% of the general fund revenues from those other taxes, the sales tax, the meals tax, the B-pole tax and so forth. So it's a big impact to lose the percentages that we're contemplating. So as we apply those projected losses to the budget estimates that we had originally produced prior to the coronavirus, we would project that we'll have a shortfall in the coming fiscal year of about $4 million, a little better than $4 million, off of the projected revenues of more than $53 million. And we thought about that, it doesn't seem that it's been that long ago that we had a budget that was $4 million less than it is now. And it was sometime in that 2017, 2018 period. The thing is that what we're trying to do now is to fund the expenditures of 2021 with revenues that we received in 2017 or 2018. And in the intervening period, we've taken on a large capital project at the high school. So our debt service has doubled from about $1.7 million to $3.4 million. Our contribution to the local school system has gone up by about $1.5 million. We've given wage increases to city employees. And each of those years, anywhere from about 2%, 3% raises in each of the fiscal years since, our contribution to outside agencies has increased pretty dramatically as well. And so a lot of those costs are built into the $53 million budget that you see. It's really not a growth of new programs or services as much as it is trying to sustain the organization we have with what are generally fairly modest wage increases, and then also the increases in contributions to debt service or outside organizations and agencies. And you may recall, as we talked during the earlier budget presentation, that we looked at the fact that of a $53 million budget, more than $22 million goes to agencies or organizations outside of the control of our departments. The biggest being school board is that of that $22 million non-departmental budget, about $15 million is dedicated to school funding. And then more than $3 million goes to debt service. And then as well, we have more than $1 million that goes to the Department of Social Services. We support regional jails and so forth. So the operating departments of the city then have control of about $30 million, just a little bit more than $30 million. And that's really where we have to attempt to make the greatest decrease in expenditures. That's not to say that we haven't or wouldn't go back to outside agencies, and we have talked to some of the outside agencies about either level funding or reducing contributions we might have otherwise given them. And as a broad brush, these would be some of the strategies that we're proposing to begin to bring the budget back into balance with a $4 million revenue shortfall. And as we get to your next session, which will be a budget public hearing, then we will obviously give you a more detailed rendering of how these reductions are to be affected. So the first, though, would be that we would suggest that you could take advantage of the Revenue Stabilization Fund that has been created by the city councils past. That Revenue Stabilization Fund is there in order to fill a budget shortfall, or revenue shortfall, if the council believes that this is a one-time and catastrophic event. And so the the measure there is essentially that you don't think this is something that you would encounter in any typical budget year, and that, you know, it is certainly legitimate, in the staff's view, a legitimate use of the Revenue Stabilization Fund. In 2021, as, again, we would suggest deferring capital in the amount of a million dollars. That number may change up or down, but that would mean you're deferring the projects that have been discussed, like such as Sunset Park and some of the other projects that are of interest to the council and the community at large. And again, I think you do this because you would believe that this is a one-time and cataclysmic event, and that because you, we wouldn't be able to sustain this kind of hit on our fund balance year in, year out. That however, the city has a healthy fund balance, and even with these deferrals and the use of stabilization funds, I think you'll continue to have a healthy fund balance. Then we would propose to eliminate the raise that was programmed for this year's budget. That would have been a 3% merit opportunity for all employees. And then as well, the first two phases of the wage and compensation study implementation, that, again, gains about $340,000. We would, again, reduce beat-up paving and equipment transfers for the purchase of new streets equipment. And then we've gone back to our operating departments, and we've been working with them to reduce their budgets through various compensation and non-compensation reductions. So we're working through that process now, but our goal there would be to reduce those operating budgets by $1.7 million. Now, if I go back a couple of slides, then, again, you look at the right side of the slide there, left, I guess, on your screen, you know, the wages and benefits comprise about 2/3 of the operation of the general fund. And so I don't see how we will be able to avoid making some reduction in wages. And we've thought about being able to accomplish that in several different ways. We're still shaping up these ideas, but to give the council and anyone who's watching a sense of how we might do that, one is that we've estimated the value of one day of furlough for employees in the general fund. And so we've looked at that both with public safety positions included, which a day's worth of wages and benefits with all the employees of the general fund included is about $50,000. If we take out the public safety positions, then a value of a furlough day is a little more than $25,000. I think that our preference would be that we not impact public safety delivery, and certainly at least not those frontline employees, the patrol officer and so forth. We've also not included frontline Public Works employees in furlough. Their wages are covered in the enterprise funds, and so you wouldn't furlough, for instance, refuse collectors and the folks who are delivering water and sewer services and that sort of thing, except for the administrative, supervisory, and management staff at Public Works. They are included in the $25,000 furlough day. So it gives you a sense that then if, at the end of the budget cuts that we're going through now, we still need $250,000, well, that's about 10 furlough days in the general fund. Another option that we evaluate is whether freezing positions or holding positions, either freezing positions that are currently open or holding positions, if someone vacates the position, could save a considerable amount of money. Right now, there are nine positions in the general fund that are vacant. The total value, wages and benefits of those positions is about $522,156 for an annual salary. However, five of the nine positions are in public safety positions. They're in the police department. There are patrol officer positions available. There's a fireman's position, telecommunicator in the emergency operations center. And so, again, those are positions that we would be loath to allow to remain vacant for a long period of time. And then there are positions in both the streets, enterprise, and sewer fund as well. Sort of what we would consider perhaps a last resort would be just a reduction in the workforce generally. As I say, these are, these numbers are provided for the council to get a sense of the magnitude of order of the options that we have available to us. And what I would expect is that, as you see, a budget, final budget proposal, some combination of these options would be presented. As we look at these options, as we contemplate the use of revenue stabilization or deferring capital expenditures, you know, I think that I would note that we're reacting very quickly to an unknown environment that while many people are contemplating and trying to understand what the economy may look like as states, and certainly here in the Commonwealth, start to open the economies back up, it's unknown, it's uncertain how quickly we'll get back to business as usual, so to speak. So some of the things that we're doing, we would want to monitor, and as we've spoken in the past, the data that we have available to us to monitor is limited, that we are just now receiving the meals tax receipts for the month of March. We won't see sales tax receipts back from the state until, for March, until mid-May. And so it takes some time for us to really even know exactly where we stand in the receipt of, or collection of those taxes. We collect our real estate tax twice a year, so there, you know, there's a lag in time from one collection to the next to understand how we're trending. If we're, we are sitting here in September and October of the coming fiscal year, in September, October of 2020, and we see that our situation is much the same as it is now, or that this, that the state we're in is going to be prolonged, then I think we probably have to make more fundamental changes in the way that we do business. Our hope is that the outlook can be more optimistic and that we will start to see some fairly quick recovery in both the local business activity, and certainly for those folks who right now are either greatly curtailed or shut down. Our earnest hope is that they can get back to business quickly. And then that the tax revenues that are necessary to put policemen on the street and provide services for fire and safety, fire rescue, and so forth are available again, and that we can reopen our parks, programs, reopen the library, and so forth. But as we sit here today, I think we're contemplating a more dire outcome. Looking ahead, tonight, in the regular business session, we'll ask the council to call for public hearings for tax rate, utility rates, and the budget itself. We will begin advertising those public hearings on before April 30th later this week. And then on May 7th, we will hold public hearings, and the council could introduce ordinances at that point in time. You could adopt a budget as early as May 14th. That would conclude my comments. I think we've allowed plenty of time, hopefully, for the council to ask questions or provide comments or guidance, just general discussion perhaps, on what you've heard tonight and your thoughts. Mr. Mayor?
Well, thank you very much. Does anybody want to have anything they'd like to share? I wanted to, to the privilege of a little preview late last week. And so I think just as a summary, at least from my observations, it would be, I absolutely appreciate staff looking at the, our situation seriously. And I think it's, in the circumstance that we're facing, advised to, advisable to hope for the best and the plan for the worst. And so I think that, I appreciate very much all the time and effort that's gone into developing a strategy that not only gets us in through the end of this fiscal year, but looks ahead to prepare for next.
I'd just say, Mr. Mayor, that I hope that our constituents and our citizens and our businesses in this town are paying attention to what we're saying now and what we'll be addressing in the next weeks to come. Because the amount that we're going to have to take out of their, out of our budget, if they had to do that with their business or their store or their family, they're going to be faced with the same decisions that we're going to be faced with. And it's, it's not good news, but it is reality, and it's something that we're all going to have to deal with, city and the private sector.
Great comments, Bruce. Absolutely agree. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to share, or add? Okay. Well, yeah, I would, you know, again, just echo Bruce's comments of the, it is a trying time. I think we said that at our emergency meeting, our first meeting out of the gate. It's, you know, lead by example, and I think that we're very confident in our staff's ability to bring us some, some hard choices that we need to make as a community, but are going to be necessary in order to weather the storm. So. Well, with that, I think we've got about a 30-minute reprieve and then to join for the full meeting, unless you all have anything else to strand?
No, sir.
All right, well, I will, we'll look forward to seeing everybody at 7 o'clock then.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, is it the same link at 7 o'clock?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening. Hi, Tewi.
All right, I'm back. We've got a mask off.
Okay.
Like we are at the prescribed time and it looks like everybody is ready to go. So with that, I will call the order of the April 27 regular business meeting of the Waynesboro City Council. And I've asked Mr. Shaw if he wouldn't mind to maybe throw up a flag on there. We can do the pledge of allegiance to try to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of Canada.
Great, thank you. First item of business this evening is the adoption of the meeting agenda. And that is, where do you, your packet, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented for tonight's meeting?
I will make that motion.
Great, thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jeannie. Any discussion? I'm going to give some longer pauses just to make sure, you know, folks just are aware. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Item number three is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'd like a motion.
Thank you, Jeannie. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, thank you, Bobby. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to. Are there matters from any member of council that you would like to share this evening?
Well, I'll make a quick comment. I've been trying to keep some information up on my Facebook page for Waynesboro citizens. And relying a lot, as I've done before, on the Virginia Department of Health website. The good news is that Waynesboro, Stanton, Augusta, we are still relatively low in our terms of confirmed cases of the COVID virus. But we are seeing that number rise. I think, you know, the actions that our citizens have taken have really kept it under good control. We are a testing site here in Stewart Street. That are positive. So, you know, hopefully we'll see that number in Virginia in the Commonwealth peak and start to fall soon. We may be a little bit later in our peak here locally, since it's been such a slow rise. But I just wanted to reaffirm that what people are doing is making the difference. And and I'll try to keep things posted on my Facebook account, since I'm straddling both these worlds here, both the healthcare and the and the government side.
Wonderful. Thank you, Sam, for that. Does anyone have anything else they'd like to share? Great, thank you. All right, with that, I would like to prompt callers. So, you know, if you haven't all figured out by now, we're going all virtual in this meeting. And so we've got a couple of public hearings that are available for for folks. And I would, I would ask that if you'd like to provide comment on any item on the agenda this evening, specifically to a public hearing or general public comment, to please do so by calling in. Those instructions again are available on the city's webpage and encourage you to take the time and to do that. When you arrive on the page, you want to click on the council to hold electronic meeting link. And workers, you're also welcome to to provide comments via email as well. Those that wish to speak during the public comment period may do so in the same manner. We'll essentially, you'll dial this if you want to call in live, you're welcome to do that. And there's an 800 number that you can call in on and essentially go into a virtual waiting room. And and they'll be received at the at the virtual podium as as you dialed in. So I hope that is helpful and people find, folks find that as good of an adaption to the real thing as possible. And I'd also just offer a reminder for folks that the public hearings are an opportunity for citizens to comment on items or bring concerns of attention to city council, but not a question and answer period. And so to get back and circle back with you. But that said, wanted to share that with you. So the first item up here is on this is a public hearing. So again, those instructions are on our website. You'll want to go to the website and click on council to hold electronic meeting. And then there are instructions for dialing in or emailing here. So you're welcome to do that. But we'll enter this first phase of a public hearing this evening for a text amendment to a zoning ordinance. And so item five is to hold a public hearing and receive comments on a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance and consider introducing an ordinance to allow two family houses duplexes by conditional use permit in the HB Highway Business District. And so with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Jude Day for presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. But before I start, since it may take some time, obviously, to have folks call in and get into the call waiting system, I just wanted to read off that number. So if you're interested in making a comment during this public hearing or any other public hearing, you're going to dial a toll free number that's 844-844-9200. That's 844-844-9200. When you're prompted, enter an access code for the meeting, which is 398-145, and the pound key, 398-145. And you'll hear Q and A session has started and then press star six. And then follow the instructions from there to get into the queue. So we'll have several public hearings and it'll be the same number for all that. You can find that on the city website if you search for Waynesboro City and then look at our announcements. Or if you look at the city's Facebook page, there's a link there as well, or our YouTube livestream, there should be information under the, under the video. The first public hearing that we have today is on a zoning text amendment. The second item you'll notice on your agenda that I'll be presenting to you is an application for a conditional use permit. These two items are tied together and they're the same applicant. So I'll be presenting both of them. But we will have to have separate public hearings. They're separate issues. Go ahead and share my screen. The issue arises because the applicant would like to construct a duplex in the HB Highway Business District. Now, currently in our ordinance, you can construct a multiplex in the HB district, which is three units, three to five units. But you can't construct a duplex by CUP. And so they are willing to, they're asking for a CUP for a multiplex if they can't get one for a duplex, but they really only only want to build two units, not three. A duplex is defined by our zoning code as two attached dwellings and a single structure on a single lot. It can be separate floors or it could be a side by side unit. And they're allowed by right in many of our residential districts, as well as in the local business district, allowed by conditional use permit and mixed residential district. The HB Highway Business District is generally designed for offices, hotels, service uses, similar business uses that rely on close proximity to major transportation routes. It's really auto oriented businesses. Whereas local, the local business and the central business districts are designed to be more pedestrian environments. But it's restricted to areas that are located on arterials and highways. And generally, we would want this land to be reserved for higher value commercial uses. And so we only allow housing by conditional use permit. So there has, it has to come to city council to get any kind of housing in the HB district. That said, we do allow a number of types of multifamily housing in the HB district by conditional use permit. And there are several locations throughout the city, one that was recently permitted on Village Drive, where there's an HB parcel that has housing it allowed there by CUP. Again, this first public hearing is for a text amendment that would allow the duplexes by conditional use permit. We believe that there's no significant difference between a three unit property and a two unit property as far as the the nuisances that it creates or the economic condition that it creates. It's important to note that allowing this to use by conditional use permit doesn't create any new entitlements. So allowing it by conditional use permit still means that it would have to come to you for approval in each specific instance. And for that reason, we recommend approval of the ordinance. We don't see a compelling reason to distinguish between the two in our zoning code in this particular situation. And we don't think that this, it's any risk for the city, since everything still has to come to you all. So that's the situation with the zoning text event. So we'll have to hold a public hearing on this subject. And then we'll also have to hold a public hearing on the actual conditional use permit. So probably best to go ahead with the public hearing for the text amendment.
Great. Well, thank you, Luke. Any questions for for Luke before we open up the public hearing?
Luke, this is Dr. Oster. I might understand then that this is changing the the text moving forward so that we wouldn't have to do this again if there was another application for the conditional use permit for the same issue in the same zoning region.
Correct. Okay, yeah. This would apply to all HB districts across the state.
Okay.
Any, any other questions? Okay, so with that, I will open up the public hearing. Do you have any? Anyone that'd like to speak? A little bit of some time to make sure there isn't anyone in the waiting room.
There were.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, there. Mr. Mayor, there's no caller. So with that, I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Bruce. Is there a second?
Second.
It's Bobby. And any discussion? All those in favor say aye. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Actually, this one will be have to be considered our formal adoption of the next regular business meeting.
Okay.
I jumped the gun on that one. Sorry. All right. Same protocol. I think we've received Mr. Jude Day's presentation unless there's anything else regarding this matter. So any questions before I open up the public hearing for for this matter? This is to hold a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to Jerry F. and Dorothy C. Pons for a conditional use permit for a two family house duplex or multiplex at zero Ohio, Ohio Street, Waynesboro, Virginia, Taxman Parcel thirty five dash two dash A one in the highway business zone.
And I have a presentation for this specific.
You. Okay, great. Thank you, Luke.
So the previous public hearing was just to change the ordinance to allow them like additional use permit. So now we have an applicant who would like to acquire one of those conditional use permits. That's why we brought it to you. So the request is for a conditional use permit for a duplex in the Highway Business District at zero Ohio Street. This is right behind the downtown Walmart, the center of the city. The parcel is about a twelve thousand square foot parcel located between the Walmart Neighborhood Market and the CVS and the number of other parcels there on Ohio Street. As you can see, it's kind of a long parcel. It has a relatively short frontage. Across the street are a number of single family homes, multiplex, several other single family homes on New Hope Drive, and then a number of miscellaneous commercial uses. The comprehensive plan designates this area for medium density residential. Though actually, almost the entire area, including all the single family homes, are currently zoned highway business. The zoning requirements, in this case, you would need seventy five hundred square feet for a duplex. Since the HB is the same residential requirements as the RG five district, and this lot is twelve thousand square feet, so it meets the ordinance there.
Gee.
We feel that the impact of a residential structure is is minimal, a commercial district. So, you know, when you talk about locating housing in a commercial district, you're not particularly concerned about the impact of the housing on the businesses, since generally housing is considered to be a low nuisance use versus a commercial zone. A bigger reason why we would consider keeping residences out of commercial districts are because you want to reserve those that land for higher value development. Want those to be places where you're having businesses congregate. Or you want it to be somewhere that you would not want to create stakeholders that would in the future complain about nuisances. As far as the site development standards, they'll have to put parking in the rear of the structure. So parking will not be able to be in the front with a duplex. Our analysis from staff is that, as I said, nuisance is generally not a big deal with putting residences in a commercial district. It's more about preserving the land for higher value use. It's not clear to us that there is a higher or a better use for this property than a residence. It's a little bit too small to really function as a commercial parcel in an HB District. It's also located just across from a number of other residences, and it's on a lower traffic side street where generally your businesses are going to want to front onto the the major roads. It's also a situation where we kind of have too much HB zoning. We've talked about this in the past, just where the demand for commercial spaces is declining, and we have a significant amount of vacant HB parcels throughout the city. And so we don't feel that this is a parcel that is going to attract any particular high value development there. And thus, we feel that the highest and best use is, in this case, probably a residential structure. For that reason, staff recommends approval. The applicant is the owner, Jerry and Dorothy Pons. They'd like to construct a duplex there to be owner occupied and then for another side to be rented out. And I believe we have at least one written comment in this, in this public here. Any questions from?
Any questions for? Okay. Look, one question I have is it, it, you know, residential context in the middle of the block, I mean, it'd be the only residential development on the entire that side of the street.
Right.
And then sort of, you know, long term of, of, you know, the adjoining property, adjacent property, I should say is I mean, I don't disagree. We have an abundance of of this classification in the city, but it also is very accommodating to a spot. I mean, I suspect the multiplex would just be incredibly challenging to construct on this site and meet parking requirements and otherwise, which is probably why for a duplex.
Not exactly. So the, I do agree with you on the the long term value issue. I think that that's a little bit of a concern to me. Yeah, it seems like an odd location to put a residential unit. But again, if an applicant wants to, believes they want to live there, then I feel like that's, I'm willing to listen to that. Now, the the parking, they actually do have plenty of space and they'll have to park in the rear. The lot, you know, while it looks small here because it's up against a bunch of other commercial parcels, and it's a little too small for a commercial parcel, it's really a fairly large residential parcel. If you look across the street, for instance, kind of for perspective, like how big a house is, and it's really a fairly large lot, sort of like a third of an acre lot for for a house. So it's in a, it's a weird in between size, but they'll have plenty of space to do. They would have plenty of space for a multiplex. They just don't want to deal with.
Okay.
What structure is there now currently a residential?
There's no structure there currently. You can see in the, in the image that there's a couple of trailers that were parked on there. And there's still some, some vehicles that have been parked on the lot, but there's, it's a vacant lot.
Hey, that that building next door to it used to be the old skating rink, and now it's one stop pet drop. Then beside that is a small home park between there and CBS Pharmacy.
Right. Okay. Any other questions for Luke? Right here, none. I will open up the public hearing and and wait to see if we have anybody on the call.
While we're waiting, we've received one written comment for this public hearing.
Sure.
This is from a property owner across the street, Harold Davies. Occupies the home. I can't remember the exact number of Ohio Street, but it's it's just across the street. Says to the city of Waynesboro, I didn't receive this letter until today at noon twenty second. So I'm writing to y'all at eleven forty five PM, just got off from work. Mr. and Mrs. Pons requests for a two family house duplex or multiplex would be a bad idea. The reason I think it would be unsafe for those families if they park close to the road like I do. There's no other place to park but out front on the road. What I'm trying to say is people coming by in their cars at a high speed, which would be unsafe for them because it's unsafe for me and my family. You've got to jump out of the road when cars come by fast. I've asked the city to put up a sign or a speed bump, but I was told it was not going to happen in that location. But I get it. Y'all will do this for the Pons when he talks. My idea is to put an office complex there for insurance, car, lawyer, et cetera. That's just my opinion, Mr. Davies.
Okay, thank you.
In reference to his complaint, the parking is could be off street in behind the duplex, correct?
Correct. Yeah, the parking would have to be behind the property.
So there will be no on-street parking there?
I'm not sure. If there's currently on-street parking allowed, then they could continue to do so.
And I don't think there's any signs prohibiting it right now.
Prohibiting, yeah. We could put up a sign, but they would have to provide off-street parking for the.
Okay.
Anyone on the, on the call?
Give us just a second.
Sure.
I don't believe we have any callers.
Okay. Here now, I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Create any discussion? Hearing now will consider this for adoption in our next regular business meeting. It moves us to number seven, which is to hold a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance approving a preliminary subdivision plat upon approval by the Q care of Milestone Partners applicant and William D. Quisenberry Junior Estate at all. Care of Whitney Quisenberry owner for a two hundred and thirteen lot residential subdivision on a sixty six point one zero six acre tract at Ivy Street, Waynesboro, Virginia, Taxman Parcel fourteen dash six dash two five. Mr. Jude Day, I think I might just go and interject again, that phone number for folks in case you want to can't find the website. It's eight four four eight four four nine two zero zero. And that's eight four four eight four four nine two zero zero, and the extension was three nine eight one four five. And that's three nine eight one four five. And you hit the pound button, follow the instructions. Thank you, Mr. Jude Day.
Thank you. This is by far the biggest issue for you today, and we have several comments in the public hearing afterwards in addition to the calls. So this is for a major subdivision of the Quisenberry property located in the north side of the city. If you head out on Route two fifty four on Ivy Road towards Hermitage, located there on the right, just north of Claybrook Drive. The property is a sixty six acre tract. It's zoned RS twelve. It's largely wooded at the moment. It's vacant. And the comp plan for that area calls for low density residential. RS twelve is our lowest density zone in the city. It allows single family homes only on large lots. So the RS twelve zone allows single family detached homes at a maximum density of three and a half units per acre. However, in our zoning code, we have a provision called cluster zone, which they're taking advantage of in this case. So in the conventional development option, the entire property could be subdivided into lots that are as small as twelve thousand square feet. I'm going to, as I said, a maximum density of three and a half units per acre. The cluster development option in our zoning code allows the applicant to cluster homes together on smaller lots in order to more efficiently use the infrastructure and reserve the remainder of the property as open space without exceeding that three and a half units per acre. Basically, they can put the houses close together on small lots if they dedicate perpetual conserve land around either as common area, parkland, wooded land, that type of thing. In this case, we have a request for a major subdivision preliminary plan. And just to explain a little bit about the situation here, it's a buy right request with no waivers. That means that they have the right to subdivide in this particular case, as long as they follow the city zoning and subdivision ordinance. Sometimes it comes before you with things like a rezoning, and that's a situation where the city has discretion. We're just deciding whether it's a good idea or a bad idea. In this case, the applicant already owns a right to subdivide according to the ordinance. And so really, all that we're able to evaluate and vote on is whether they've met the standards of the city ordinance. So fortunately, we can't, we can't decide in this case whether we just like subdivision to happen or not. What we're deciding is whether we feel that they've met the standard that we've set in our ordinance for what a subdivision should be. The subdivision is two hundred and thirteen single family home lots. As I mentioned, they're using the cluster development option. The lot sizes vary, but they average just under six thousand square feet. So even though they're in the low density, low density zone, they're able to do these lots that are closer to the typical lot size and like Wayne Hills or the tree streets, more of a typical city lot size. They are dedicating twenty seven point seventy five acres in common area. This will include some stormwater features, also a lot of wooded land. They're going to leave a wood buffer around the edge of the property and then have, they're required to have at least eleven contiguous acres, and they're going to do a fifteen acre contiguous common area. It'll have trails and so forth. This is the overall plan for the subdivision. Our comp plan requires them to include road connections, and our subdivision ordinance requires road connections to be made available to other parcels that might develop in the future. Because there are not actually applications or processes moving forward for developing any of these neighboring parcels, we have not required them to build to the property line. In a situation like this, we simply require them to reserve right of way to the property line. So we've required right of way connections to some neighboring properties. We've also required them to provide an interconnected street network that will disperse traffic flow better. And so you'll see that they're connecting in several locations to the network that's currently building out in that area of the city. As you can see, the development is on these fairly smaller city sized lots to the cluster zoning option, and then you have a large tract of woods, common area here that'll have trails in it, and then they have a number of other smaller tracts of common area that are being used for active recreation. In phase one, they'll be constructing a small pocket park in the first phase with a pavilion and a playground. In future phases, they'll be doing pedestrian greenways and some crushed stone trails. And then they're also going to be maintaining a wooded buffer around the edge of the development. And our ordinance requires them to dedicate this common area and requires them to dedicate at least a certain percentage of about a quarter of it be what they call improved common area. And that can be anything from something that has value for aesthetic purposes to something that's useful for active recreation or for trails. But it essentially can't be residual land. So you're not supposed to just dedicate common area that is unusable. It's supposed to be property that will add some value to the development. So that's one thing that we can evaluate today. Here's their plan for the their neighborhood amenity plan. They're proposing to provide some crushed stone trails through this wooded area that will back up to the existing Claybrook development. Generally, we would require them to have smaller blocks. They have one very long block length here. But in this case, adding additional road connections to break up the block would not have any value to the traffic system. It would just be additional pavement to maintain for us. So we proposed, and our ordinance allows that to be waived in cases where there's no traffic benefit. And so they proposed to put in these pedestrian thoroughfares to break up the block instead, which will be trail connections from a sidewalk on one road, sidewalk on the other road, and some additional landscaping improvements. This is the location of the playground that they're proposing in the first phase of the development. And then you can kind of see here through the green where they're proposing to leave woods around the edge of the property. I'll come back to that in a second. So the phasing is proposed to be, will probably change honestly. So the first phase is what the applicant wishes to construct as soon as possible, and that first phase is is very clearly delineated. I'll show it to you in a second. For the first phase, the sewer connection will be a gravity main to the existing sewer system that runs through Claybrook and Evershire to Hobman Parkway. Phase two is everything beyond that phase one, and that's a very large number of houses. So there's a possibility that that could get broke up in the further phases of the future. But phase two is dependent on a different sewer situation. You'll notice that the third condition in your staff report deals with the sewer line being required to be dedicated. That's actually going to have to get changed. Melissa and Jordan and I have talked about that, and it's not enforceable as as we've written it. But basically, what needs to happen is the phase one development can run gravity sewer down to Claybrook. Phase two is in sort of a slope downward. So they'll either have to run gravity sewer across the property to the east, currently owned by Sherry Smith. Or, and that's what they would prefer to do, what we would prefer them to do, or they will have to construct a pump station and a force main to get sewer up to the Claybrook connection. Both the developer and the city staff would prefer that we have a gravity sewer, but that's dependent on the landowner granting the easement for construction of that sewer main, which they've not been able to acquire yet. So they'll be unable to proceed to phase two until that issue is is resolved, or they'll have to construct some kind of pump station. So we're we're going to have to change the language of that condition, so you know that the the condition in front of you is is not going to be quite accurate. For emergency access, the other condition that's there, we have several conditions. The second condition, I believe, or the fourth condition, requires a gravel emergency access route to be maintained between unfinished ends of streets to ensure adequate flow for emergency equipment. Again, if you look at the overall road plan, if you're thinking about phasing, if parts of these roads are being built along, you could get a very long, essentially undeveloped cul-de-sac or dead end street before you finally finish the development. So we're just requiring that they maintain at the ends of those unfinished streets gravel connections to other road points so that fire trucks will always have two points of access. Here's the phasing diagram. So the phasing line runs roughly here. So again, the playground will be developed in the first phase as well as all these homes on the gravity main to Claybrook. And then the future phases will continue to the east. There's another condition as well. There they will have to construct turn lanes on Ivy Road, both a right turn lane and a left turn lane into the development because of the amount of traffic that they're generating. Unlike a rezoning, we can't really horse trade for road improvements. In this case, we can't really horse trade rezoning either, but roughly. But in a subdivision, it's especially limited. So they can only do what is really required by the traffic that they're generating in their subdivision. In this case, they're fairly close to the warrants with the amount of traffic that they're generating. And upon being reviewed by VDOT, the recommendation we got from VDOT was that they felt that the turn lanes were justified and that we should require them. However, because they're fairly close to the warrants, we are not asking to to require those upfront. Instead, we'll put in what's generally a trigger is what you often include with a subdivision like this. And in this case, it's 100 lots. So as they get close to about halfway, they'll have to have completed the turn lanes. And that ensures that as they get closer to the point where they warrant that turn lane, that it will get constructed. As far as the standards of the subdivision ordinance, staff feels that they have met these. They're required to provide five foot sidewalks on both sides of the street. They'll be doing that. Their street profiles will have to meet the VDOT and state fire code minimums. They will be required to sign one side of the street for no parking, unfortunately, because of the fire code, which requires a clear zone in the street. So the staff did request that the main road be widened, but the applicant was able to provide traffic counts that showed their development wouldn't generate enough traffic to require that wider profile. And the lots do meet the minimum standards of the cluster zoning designation. The cul-de-sac meets their maximum cul-de-sac link turnaround size requirement. And they also have met a road connectivity requirements, including ensuring two points of access in all phases of the development and reserving right of way for future interactions. As far as their stormwater infrastructure, the layout puts a stormwater pond right at the intersection of Claybrook Drive and Road B. The applicant placed it there because of topography that that's a low point sloping down from the phase one part of the development. So they feel that it has to be located in that general zone. But we have had quite a few concerns from the Claybrook homeowners about nuisance of having a large wet pond there right up against the road where it's visible and also close to, there's one homeowner that's located right next to it. We worked a little bit with the applicant and the city has some buffer requirements that we were able to apply in this situation. They've agreed to a 15 foot minimum vegetated buffer around the stormwater pond. And they're looking into whether the pond could be put on the other side of the road, but they've not come to us with a proposal for that. So I think we should assume that this is the location where the pond will be. It's what we're voting on. Again, having limited discretion in these cases, staff feels that the applicant has met the minimum standards of the zoning and subdivision ordinance, that they have provided the connectivity that we request, they provided good uses of the common area and that the general layout conforms to the zoning code. I'll take any questions.
Thanks, Luke. Any questions for Mr. Jada?
The original map, there were three ponds noted. Are they standing water or just water retention areas?
There'll be wet ponds. So yeah, there'll be some standing water.
Okay.
I can't guarantee what they'll look like. You know, they may not be you know, like decorative ponds in terms of how nice they look there. They have to. Stormwater ponds are very tightly engineered. I mean, there's, there's pretty clear set of standards for how they're built, and so they'll definitely do their job. I can guarantee that. But I don't know exactly how they'll look.
Okay.
And I have the entire plat up here as well. If you'd like to look at any specific part of it.
Any additional questions?
Hey, Luke.
Yes.
The stormwater pond that they're building in phase one, how will that affect the pond in Claybrook? Will that feed into it?
Yeah, and sort of. So there's already a drainage setup. You know, you have a topography where that water drains down to the South River eventually from everywhere in the city. And so water will continue to be able to follow that typical drainage pattern in the way that it does now. What the stormwater pond will do is ensure that no, any additional runoff that's created by by development, by adding more hard surfaces, roads and houses and things like that will stay on site. So no additional runoff will be able to escape the development. The typical amount of water that already flows through our system will continue to flow through it.
Thank you, Luke.
Any other questions? I've got a couple of questions for you. So in terms of the presentation, I guess I'll start with maybe the easier or harder one, depending on how it comes out, but um the so the, in the context of what we're considering tonight is the approval of a preliminary plat in which you've said, said that the sewer system and the conveyance of that sewer, the buildability of it has not been fully vetted or it's sort of, as I understand, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it sounded like, like it's not exactly, there's not a really clear path to conveying the balance of the sewer discharge.
It's, it's clear that they are able to provide sewer to the site. I mean, that we have sewer at the edge of the property, which means that we're obligated to provide them a hookup to that if they can get their sewage to our pipe. The issue is that this east side of the property is at a lower elevation. And so really, we would prefer for our sake and for theirs that it was a gravity system. There was a pipe heading off, you know, right about here to the east and traveling across the Sherry Smith property over across the district home property to the our sewage connections there rather than having to come back uphill and get into the sewer system here. It, so that's what we would prefer and but until we can, they can get an easement for that, we will they'll, they'll, they're not able to construct that. So their alternative options are to build some kind of force main system where they're forcing the sewage uphill. And that can be more expensive to maintain. That's why we are not, we don't love that idea. Now, in my discussions with Melissa and Jordan, we can't require, we can't hold this development hostage over requiring a gravity main, nor can we require them to to continue to maintain a private system. But we can put in a condition, and this is what we would like to adjust the language in condition three to requiring them to make a good faith effort at market value to acquire that easement and to document that for us. So we're going to require that they pursue that that route first.
Okay. That's helpful. Next, next question I had, and I appreciate you having the exhibit up. Question that I received today was the phasing of of road improvements relative to the first house before it gets a certificate of occupancy and a neighbor moves in, what, what roads can, can neighbors expect to be built and in place at the first house?
I'd expect, so you can see the phasing line here, to expect Road B to get built. And then this section of Road C coming in, and then this cul-de-sac on Road A. That's, that's the phase one as they've submitted public improvement plans.
Great. So, so there is, there is a direct connection off of, off of 254.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Um, next is, they'll be required to have two connections into the development by our, your emergency access data.
Who maintains the open space and park space that's being created?
That'll be, have to be maintained by the homeowners association. They'll be required to.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, that'll be that, that space will have to be dedicated open space, which means it can't be developed ever in the future. And then it'll be held and responsibility for maintenance will be the HOA.
Okay, thank you. Another question I got was about the stormwater quality. And I know in the staff report, there was a remarks regarding Chesapeake Bay requirements and ensuring that any water is charged or otherwise collected on site. Yeah, I just wanted if you wouldn't mind, just, just so folks at home that might be watching or later on understand the requirements in terms of water quality discharge.
Sure. So under the Chesapeake Bay Act, developments have to process both quantity and quality of stormwater. That means both that they can't, what I was saying before, they can't create any new quantity of stormwater runoff to neighboring property. So any additional stormwater runoff created by new hard surfaces will be handled by these ponds. They'll be large enough for that. They also have to handle stormwater quality, which means that a certain poundage of like nitrates and different pollutants have to be handled on site. And that's through the design of the ponds and through other stormwater infrastructure that they include. And those standards keep getting bumped up sort of in phases. And oftentimes there's a dispute about which, which set of standards they have to comply with. This is a brand new development. They'll have to comply with the newest set of standards.
Great. Thank you, Luke. Are there any other questions for Mr. Jada?
I had another question. Your question, Mr. Mayor. The, if they end up going with a pumping station with sewer issue, is that also maintained by the homeowners association then?
No, we'll have to expect that. Yeah, and that, and that will, we would certainly prefer that the HOA maintained it, but Virginia State Code doesn't authorize us to require that. So that would be turned over to us to maintain. It would have to be built to our standards, but it would be a more expensive piece of infrastructure. So our hope is that they'll acquire the sewer easement. But that's, and that would be the preference both for the developer and for us. The pump station will be more expensive for them to construct also. And then, but I'm still asking that we include that condition as it's going to be reworded, saying that they'll have to make a reasonable attempt to acquire it.
And that verbiage will be done by the time we pass the actual?
Yes, Jordan felt that it wasn't a problem to, to clean up the verbiage of the condition between now and the passage, as long as we explain what it was. I think as it says now, the eastern phase can't be constructed until the easement is acquired. And our legal counsel basically determined that we couldn't hold them to that for by right subdivision.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thanks, Luke. Well, and with that, I will hereby open up the public hearing. Emails for some, from some folks today, but whatever staff would like to do, if you'd like to go try the phones first or?
Let's, if folks can go ahead and start trying to call in, in the meantime, we can read the written comments that we've received. Oh, I'm sorry. We also have the applicant.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah. That's right.
Good evening, members of City Council. My name is LJ Lopez. Hopefully you all can hear me.
Yep, Cam, thank you. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. My first Zoom public hearing, so.
Our too.
Thank you for having me. I'm glad to be a part of the first one. As Mr. Jada introduced the project, this is a by right project residential in nature. I don't have a prepared presentation like we normally would under normal circumstances. So for the sake of time and simplicity, I'm happy to answer any questions as they come up. And I took notes on what council members had asked and happy to address some of those. But it may make more sense to go through the public hearing and then get the whole list of questions, concerns, then happy to address those at some point in the future in the meeting.
That sounds like a great idea. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Turn it over to you, Luke, or?
I'll read the comments and then we'll. Do you want to go? Okay, we have a caller. So Gary, if you want to patch our caller in, then I'll read the written comments.
Great. Thanks for joining us this evening. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record. And then as we prepare that, if you wouldn't also just mind, keep in mind, we do have a four minute, you don't have a stoplight for this evening of comments, but we do have a four minute period. I'm just ask staff to give me a high sign when we hit the four minute mark. The caller.
If you could give us just a second.
Sure thing.
Well, why don't I go ahead and read one? Because one of them is sort of the Claybrook homeowners associations. Let me go ahead and just read a written comment as first. The, the main group that we've been interacting with throughout this process is the Claybrook Owners Association. And that's the owners from the, the older Claybrook homes just south of the property. So the ones that are most directly affected. So I have a comment from Dave Sheldon, who's president of the Claybrook Owners Association. Says the Claybrook Owners Association, located immediately south of the planned Quisenberry property development, has a great concern on issues affecting homeowners' property values, traffic and pedestrian safety, polluted water runoff. Claybrook Phase One is now bordered on two sides with lots, homes and streets of much smaller size and value. It now faces a third subdivision with 213 homes with even smaller lots, houses and streets. Two streets are now planned to exit into the Claybrook subdivision. These exits will substantially increase safety risks onto a safe and quiet neighborhood. It will create additional hazards trying to exit onto Ivy directly across from the Anna Marie entrance. We believe a second route from Ivy Road into the Quisenberry property is an option or eventually eliminating the front exit onto Claybrook Drive. Without a proper buffer, this planned exit also comes very close to a current homeowner's property. We ask these exits into Claybrook be addressed before voting. There is also a concern that a proposed wet pond across from Claybrook's private pond will overflow polluted water runoff into our pond if not properly designed and maintained. We would like assurances that the design will protect our pond to the maximum extent possible. We do understand that holding back a major flood is unrealistic. We ask the Waynesboro City Council to recommend a compromise to the development of lower priced homes, more traffic congestion and safety concerns around our community. Too many homeowners have left this neighborhood in the past year. These moves are influenced by the ever expanding poorly matched developments and the minimizing of natural boundaries. Then I have a comment from another resident, Ms. Marty Rao, Mr. William Elliott at 216 Claybrook Drive. They say, please note our opposition to the development of the Quisenberry property as proposed. Our preference would be a development with the same zoning requirements and guidelines that were in place when Claybrook Phase One was developed. However, if the current Quisenberry development proposal is approved, please note that we oppose the developers' proposed roadway that would connect the Quisenberry development to Claybrook Drive near the Route 254 entrance to Claybrook. Our rationale is first that the proposed road would create additional traffic trying to access Route 254 directly across from the entrance of Anna Marie, which is a large and growing development with continuous entering and exiting vehicles. Walkers and runners coming from Claybrook section of Waynesboro's Greenway cross over to the paths of Anna Marie at that intersection. The signature landmark of Claybrook is its pond. We invest significantly to keep it beautiful and a welcome habitat for wildlife. This harmony would be disrupted by a road that connects to 213 new houses and 400 plus vehicles. While we support the city's prudent development initiatives, we respectfully ask the city to support our efforts to remain an asset to Waynesboro as one of its finest neighborhoods. At the planning commission meeting, it was mentioned that the connector road might be needed during the development of Quisenberry Phase One. If that is the case, then after the development is complete, would you please consider making the front connector road an emergency road and not for everyday public use? Thank you for your time and consideration. We have the caller. We have the caller. Trying to figure out how to get our, our callers on.
Sure thing. Appreciate everybody's patience, including the caller.
And if anyone out there is watching and does not want to call in, but wants to send in written comment quickly, you still have a little bit of time on, or I can, I can see what's on the city website. Go ahead. Again, the number is 844-844-9200. The access code is 398-145-pound, and then you'll hear Q and A session has started. Press star six.
I'm going to try. Calling this down.
Okay.
And you want?
Patch him on to the.
Let's catch him on.
All right, we're going to try to jerry-rig a solution here.
Sure. I think they're sharing internal first.
Mr. Mayor, we had a caller who's not made comment, and so we have called him. We get an answering machine. That we're double-checking. We've tested the system, you know, earlier in the evening. We're going to double-check the system. Okay. But the caller may just be listening to the meeting on the phone.
Okay, so with that, we can. Do we see? So, I could, I could close the public hearing, and then we can. We have the individuals, we just try to track them down and see if they had additional comments to share and digest that we're not taking action this evening. We're just, we would only introduce the ordinance and, and potentially receive additional comments prior to, but I guess in order to get that into the record, would we, what would, what would be, Melissa, what would your suggestion be?
Thank you, Mayor. You could reopen the public hearing if they came back on the phone this evening, or they could submit comments in writing as the other participants did, and those could be added and shared with council.
Wonderful. Yep.
It's the, I get an answering machine, and gentleman's answering machine says that it's Dave Sheldon, who sent in written comment that Mr. Jude just shared with you.
Gotcha. Okay. I think we, we, as a courtesy, we wanted to go ahead and reach out to Mr. Sheldon, maybe after the meeting, to see if there's additional comments that, from the discussion that he'd like to add. So, I want to afford that opportunity. Okay. All right, so with that, I will hereby close the public hearing. And then, I guess, just offer an opportunity for the, for the applicant, if they have any additional comments that they'd like to share with us.
Mr. Mayor, thanks for the opportunity. As I noted earlier, wrote down some of the questions that were asked by council, and then some of the comments that came through from the public that were read in. Regarding the gravity sewer versus force main, so to distinguish between Phase One and Phase Two, Phase One has gravity sewer. We have connections in Claybrook Drive. That being standard development process and infrastructure and not a, an issue or problem, if you will. Regarding future Phase Two, future Phase Two has two options available to it. So, the, as Mr. Jude indicated, the desired sewer connection by both ourselves, the applicant and the city, would be a gravity sewer connection, which requires an off-site easement. We would make all reasonably available efforts to acquire that easement, should we not be able to. A force main or pump station would be designed and constructed in accordance with city standards and would serve and satisfy the sanitary needs for future Phase Two. So, in either instance, the, the future Phase Two has access to sewer. It can be satisfied. One method is more desirable than the other. And as a, as a note or side note, current Claybrook Phase Two has a portion or section of it that is, that has a force main and is not on gravity sewer. In that southeast corner, or excuse me, it'd be northeast of their property, kind of the direct adjacent between Claybrook Phase Two and what would be this future project is where that force main exists. So, it does exist today in the adjacent vicinity, and that sewer connection in the future could provide gravity for both the proposed project and Claybrook Phase Two. They would tie in, and that force main would go away. So, there's mutual benefit. We certainly see and understand that. But there are options to satisfy, one, gravity, two, with the force main. The Phase One roads to be built, as Mr. Jude outlined in the exhibit, those are the Phase One and that phasing line, and those would be the extent of the streets and the connections that would be made in Phase One. So, I just second or confirm that. The open space and park maintenance responsibility, again, just confirming that answer, that it is homeowners association responsibility for open space and park maintenance. The active recreation areas within the neighborhood, they would, we would create and obligate the homeowners association prior to the subdivision plat being approved and recorded, and that would be an ongoing maintenance, and that would be the mechanism for it. There was a question or comment earlier about stormwater quality and quantity, both of which have to meet the current engineering design standards and standards manual would undergo its final site plan review and would be reviewed and enforced onsite during construction by city staff. So, we fully intend to and have our final site plan running through the design and engineering review process currently. So, that's all currently ongoing. To address the pond, there are three ponds onsite. They are wet ponds. They're level-two wet ponds, so they would have a aeration fountain in them. One, it's decorative. You know, beauty's in the eye of the beholder, but, you know, it will have a fountain in there to aerate the pond, and that aeration serves a quality function. So, as part of that, it does get a quality feature out of it. It's part of the design standards. Pump station ownership, we did address that, so there would be the option, not the obligation for the homeowners association to maintain that. It could be built to a lesser standard, but it would be our, should the homeowners association accept responsibility, there's potential for that to be built to a lower standard. However, it would be our intent. Homeowners associations are not in the business of maintaining municipal sanitary infrastructure. We would build it to the municipal standard review and then dedicate that for its ongoing maintenance. Again, that's in the default or backup, should we not be able to procure that easement. And strategically, Phase Two and the connection for that sanitary sewer is, follows Phase One and will allow us time to work through the easement procurement process. Regarding comments from the Claybrook Owners Association to the South, I very much appreciate the comments and respect the comments that were shared this evening. I've met with the Claybrook Owners Association onsite at the Planning Commission hearing and then have had correspondence and dialogue with them ongoing throughout the design process. And while I understand the, the statements that were shared, I believe some of those are opinion. Politely, you know, can agree to disagree with some of those, and as Mr. Jude indicated earlier, it is a development plan that is by right, meeting the current standards and ordinance, and some of those, we'll have to agree that are opinion, and we may not be able to address as we go forward with the development. Lastly, the comment on the front connector road, and I believe that's speaking to Road B and its connection to Claybrook Drive. In Phase One, the two points of connectivity would be Claybrook Drive and then Ivy Street. And as future Phase Two were to be developed, there would be additional connections made available. Those roads are ultimately, those roads are ultimately going to be dedicated to the city of Waynesboro. And really, I, at its discretion, could close or revert Road B to an emergency access, should it desire at some point in the future. So, we're, we're open to that with the understanding that it's ultimately, you know, will be your infrastructure that we're building and then dedicating those roads to. Just from a planning and neighborhood interconnectivity standpoint, I don't think that is wise or advisable, just from a neighborhood and planning perspective, but I certainly understand and appreciate and have faced the existing neighborhood concern of additional traffic, and so understand and really leave that to your discretion with it being your street in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Any questions?
I guess I would have a follow-up question then, perhaps to Luke, about that thought of closing Road B once the Road D would build in Phase Two. Is that a reasonable consideration in your thought, or would be better to leave that open?
I disagree with that suggestion, just for traffic purposes, but I, it's not, there's no legal reason we couldn't do that, or, you know, no, like, physical engineering reason we couldn't do that. Generally, I think when I presented the subdivision ordinance revision a while back, I sort of explained that the more that you cut road connections and, you know, reduce them, you, you create quieter streets in certain areas, but you end up just lengthening car trips, and you end up concentrating traffic on all your arterials, which makes them kind of blow up. It makes for more hostile environment. You, you get a lot more efficient use of your road network if you have those interconnection. So, I think that in this case, it'll be, you know, they project about 80% of the traffic will go out the exit towards Ivy, and 20% would go down to the Claybrook exit. But to, to my eye, I think it would be better for the city to keep it open. Again, if, if there was a council that wanted to, wanted to change that, there's, there's nothing that would bar us from doing.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, thank you. Any additional questions? All right, hearing done. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I'd like to motion to introduce the ordinance.
Thank you, Jeannie. Is there a second?
A second.
Great, thank you. Any discussion? All right, so this ordinance will be considered for adoption at our next regular business meeting. Thank, thank you for joining us this evening. All right, number eight is to hold a public hearing and receive comment on an application by the Secretary of Housing and Urban Development to vacate 151 square feet of undeveloped public right-of-way behind 1604 First Street, city tax map 25-8-147-1, to resolve an encroachment issue to facilitate the sale of vacant property. Mr. Jude?
I thought that I had this one pulled up. I did not. So, give me just a second. This application is at 1604 First Street. That's in the northern part of the city, located up here, coming off the Wayne Hills area, close to Hope and Parkway. In this case, it's a house that's currently vacant. It was foreclosed on by HUD, which had backed the, it was a federally-backed mortgage. The homeowner was foreclosed on, and so HUD took possession of the property. It currently sits vacant. Oftentimes, properties that get taken over by HUD after foreclosure do sit vacant for a long time. We did a rezoning for a commercial property on Charlotte Avenue that had been vacant for about 10 years. And in this case, an encroachment issue is impeding their ability to get financing or to sell the property. And so somehow that issue has to be resolved in order for this property most likely to be able to be sold or to move. So, that's the main motivation that I have for bringing this, is that we, we don't want a vacant house. We, as much as possible, would like to see property moved and used. In this case, the encroachment issue is created by a pool deck that you can sort of barely see in this photo here down at the bottom. Here's the, the back of the house. You see the front of the house up here. Here's the back of the house, and down the hill here, there's this pool, and then there's this shed here. And actually, this is an undeveloped city alleyway that runs back here, and the pool deck runs over onto the city alleyway. And roughly outlined there is the area of the alley that we would like to vacate. Here's the diagram, city GIS system. Again, this pool crosses over the boundary line there. They own this, these sort of oddly shaped parcels as well. This is a dead end of an alley here. It's mostly undeveloped. It is used by this property owner here, but it, vacating this little section will not impede their ability to get in and out. We have a manhole located right, right about here, but we'll still have just as much clearance as we did before in order to work on that manhole. So, we're trying to vacate the minimum amount to resolve the issue. On here is a plat that shows the new property lines. We're going to vacate those non-conforming property lines in the middle. And then, here, you kind of see this little dotted outline is the area alleyway that we'd like to vacate and sell to the applicant. So, this will be 151 square feet that will be giving them to their property. It'll allow the parcel to be consolidated with the improvements within the property boundary. Value of this property is nominal. We have provisions in our code to charge them for the property. If it exceeds $1,000 in value, the value of this will be minimal, probably less than their application fee. The value of this will be minimal, probably less than their application fee. We had three viewers appointed who found no inconvenience and public would result from this. Again, we generally don't like to incentivize people building non-conforming structures on, over, over city property. And so in the past, we've found ways to charge, but this particular structure was built several owners ago. Property's been foreclosed. I don't feel that we're, you know, creating bad incentives by, by going through this process. It's onerous enough already to hire survey air and to, to get this dealt with. For that reason, we recommend approval. This will allow the house to be sold and allow us to get rid of another vacant property.
Thank you. Any questions on the staff report? All right, hearing done. I will hereby open up the public hearing. We received any comments or any calls in on this one?
No written comments. Do you have any calls? Give us, give us just a second.
Sure thing.
We have no calls.
Okay, with that, I will hereby close the public hearing. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Castro. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Jeannie. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say, oh, I'm sorry. It's actually another one. We will roll to the next meeting as well. Let's jump the gun. If any of those is even. Um, all right, number nine, we've, we've, we're, we're past the, the public hearing phase. So, okay. Number nine is adopting a resolution supporting an application by Augusta Health to the state health commissioner for a certificate of public need imaging equipment project number VA-8500 at Augusta Health. Mr. Ham.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Augusta Health has approached the city seeking a resolution to support their application to the commissioner of health with a certificate of public need. More specifically for the acquisition of certain imaging equipment. The acquisition of that equipment is part of Augusta Health's pursuit the next phase of the strategic plan, which they will construct a freestanding outpatient diagnostic and imaging center on the current Augusta Health campus. They do so to provide enhanced quality and lower cost diagnostic care to the region. And the plan additionally seeks to address the growing demand for specialized imaging services Wayne State and Augusta area. I think it's important to note that the COPN process has been established in Virginia since the early 1970s. Does not speak to confirmation of the quality of care, but rather a regulatory measure to sort of meet out the acquisition of certain equipment and the construction of certain healthcare facilities to prevent oversupply in a particular market for various services or equipment. The hospital seeks the city's support in this, seeking the support of Stanton and Augusta County as well. As a large employer in the region and the primary provider of emergency and urgent care. And the area's only community hospital, the council receives my recommendation to support the resolution. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Mr. Ham.
Mr. Mayor, I would choose to abstain from this vote because I'm involved in the healthcare industry. Rather not weigh in on that issue.
Okay, great. Thank you, Seem. All right, any questions? Hearing any is, are, is there a motion to adopt the resolution as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. McCutcheon, as a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I have one extension. One extension. Thank you. All right, number 10 is to consider appointing three viewers. One is chair and alt, and an alternate to consider the impact of the request by the city of Waynesboro and Waynesboro redevelopment housing authority to vacate a 10 foot undeveloped alley located in Fairview Cemetery. I have nominations.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a nomination. Can we nominate Mark Stevens for chair? James Nichols as a member, Greg Bruno as a member, and Ellen Winter as an alternate.
Great, thank you. That's a, we have a nomination. Do we have a second for that nomination? Great, thank you, Jeannie. Any discussion? Vote to confirm. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you for their service.
Yeah.
Number 11 is to consider scheduling a public hearing for Thursday, May 7th, 2020 at 7:00 PM to consider public comments regarding the following. A, the fiscal year 2021 budget. B, the proposed tax rate for personal property and machinery and tools. C, the proposed sewer refuse and stormwater utility fees for fiscal year 2021. Is there a motion to set the public hearings for May 7th at 7:00 PM?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a, a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, and that motion carries. Thank you. Item 12 is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a portion of unassigned fund balance in the general fund in the amount of $10,080 to the general fund for the Jones Hollow Dam debris and sediment removal services. Mr. Ham.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, the city of Waynesboro owns and maintains the flood control dam at Rockfish Run. It's classified among regulators as the South River Dam number 8A, locally known or more commonly known as the Jones Hollow Dam. It's a regulated structure in the Commonwealth with a specific permit and permit requirements that are overseen by the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation to maintain with, with the city's obligation to maintain a regular certificate. Presently, the dam is operating without a certificate because of a feature on the dam, the low level drain, which essentially is a valve at the bottom of the reservoir, is not properly functioning. The staff, our, our staff have made several attempts with our, our both technical expertise and equipment available to us to correct the problem, but we've not been able to do so successfully. This appropriation ordinance provides funding to hire a specialized dive or diver who will solve the problem for us, repair and restore the valve to operating capacity. Funds, as mentioned previously, important to maintain the certificate and functionality of the dam. It's my recommendation that the council appropriate the funds.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Ham? Okay, is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, this ordinance, so we'll receive final consideration for adoption in our next business meeting. Number 13 is to consider adopting ordinance appropriating Virginia Department of Emergency Management grant funds in the amount of $24,000 to the general fund for regional hazmat plan revisions. Mr. Ham.
Here's short notice of council. You may recall that the revisions have been completed and presented to the council. This was a reimbursement grant, and so our funds from the state grant are now arriving to the organization. It's necessary to appropriate. The work has been completed since after the fact dispersment of grant receipts.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff? This will pay for the damn work that we have over. Are there any questions? There are a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I will make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jeannie. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, number 14 is to consider adopting ordinance appropriating a Virginia tiered system of supports PBIS state grant in the amount of $689 to the school funds for staff development. Mr. Ham.
These are grant funds.
Great. Is there any question, are there any questions? Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? I need, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 15 is to consider adopting ordinance appropriating in title one, part A, improving basic programs funding in the amount of $60,000 to the school funds to be used in support salary and benefits. Staff development enrichment programs and technology purchases at William Perry and Winona Elementary Schools. Mr. Ham.
These are federal funds.
Okay, any questions? Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance? Thank you, Bruce. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Jeannie. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 16 is to consider appointing Dr. M. Edgar Hollowell, Jr. to the historical commission for an unexpired term ending August 30th, 2020. Dr. Hollowell will be eligible for reappointment at that time. Is there a motion to appoint Dr. Hollowell?
I'll make that emotion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Hollowell, for his service. Next is, we're, we're getting close to item number 18, which is our citizen comment period. And so just as a reminder for folks, if you'd like to participate, we will give it a whirl again online at 844-844-9200. I think it's 844-844-9200. And you'll need to enter the access code of 398145 and hit the pound key. And it's 398145, pound key. So that brings us to item number 17, which is communication and correspondence. Mr. Ham.
Just as a courtesy and a point of emphasis, May 7th is a Thursday, the date this evening that we've established for the public hearing. Please take note that that is a Thursday. That's all I have of this evening. I mean, additional.
Great, thank you. Which brings us to number 18, which is the citizen comment period. We have anyone on the line?
Can we have just a minute, please?
Sure thing.
No call, sir.
All right, with that, brings us to number 19. Before I do that, I want to just commend staff again for arranging. I think that this was still figuring out the phone, the phone calls, but I'm encouraged that we could, we could definitely tell if they weren't on, which is, which is good. And, but I do want to extend my appreciation, I'm sure council's appreciation to organizing this and I think pouring it off.
We appreciate that very much.
So it brings us to number 19. Is there a motion to adjourn? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Great, thank you. Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And we are adjourned. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Bye, all.